This conference will now be recorded.
May I be the presenter if you have a problem?
No, that'd be great.
Was there some specific things you wanted me to cover at all? Or just mostly for Kelly to present to the board?
I wasn't sure quite what you had set up, Dan.
Well, I think there's enough "real estate" to cover, quote unquote, pun intended, for Kelly to cover this material, I think, and really address some of the pressing issues and concerns and questions that you might have. For whatever reason, I just have... My phone keeps ringing off the hook today, so I'm going to try to stay focused with you guys and play backup for Kelly. Not that she needs it, but if there are any questions she might want to pitch over to me, I'd be happy to help support that. I think the material in our conversations leading up to this is really much, pretty much focused on the Board of Adjustments and kind of role and responsibility, looking at your existing documents and ordinances that are in place, and how do you operate, given the framework that you have in the city of Venice? Does that sound right to you, Kelly? That's how you were planning to approach it? Yeah. So, for those of you that don't know me, I'll introduce myself. I'm Dan Clark, and I am the Director of the Local Government Center here at Montana State University. And we at the Center support local governments all over the state. So, we work with cities and counties, and special districts, and other appointed districts and boards to build their capacity through technical assistance, training, and research. So, you know, we're pleased to have the opportunity to work with you folks in Venice, and particularly the Board of Adjustments, as you're striving to figure out what is your role as a Board of Adjustment? What is your decision space? That you are to add value to the ordinances and the processes developed and adopted by the city to ensure your citizens have equal access to the standards of your town and making decisions that will help support the community both today and well into the future? And so, we've invited Kelly to... Who is an expert in all things, in all ways. So, and I'll let Kelly introduce herself, but she comes with a tremendous amount of background and experience, both in Montana and in the West, dealing with land use issues, as well as she's a very accomplished attorney. So, you've got the two hitters there. You've got both a planner and an attorney. So, that's... Instead of just punting and saying, "Oh, talk to your attorney about that." Well, we can just ask Kelly as an attorney. Not your attorney, but that sure helps to have that experience in looking at both what is it you have in place at the Town of Venice, and then how to use a Board of Adjustments, working within that framework, make decisions. So, I'm hoping that's what you were hoping to get out of this discussion this afternoon. Any thoughts or comments before I turn the time over to Kelly?
Yeah, I have one. I'm John Heckler. When you read the existing zoning regulations for the Town of Venice, it sets forth the responsibilities and limits of this board. It's fairly simple. And I'm wondering if... Have you two read their zoning on the zoning board? And do you have comment that we should have additional or less responsibilities and authorities than which is already set forth in their zoning ordinance?
So, Dan, I don't know if you have any thoughts. I have read through the ordinance and specifically looking at Board of Adjustment and the authority and the grounds for your decision-making. And I have sprinkled some ideas and thoughts throughout the presentation. So, I'm hoping that we will hit on some of those issues.
And I think one of the things that would be helpful, and I think Kelly's prepared to approach this discussion with you in this manner, and that if there are specific questions like that and other things that you want to make sure you discuss today during this presentation, I think that'll be very helpful for her as she hears, you know, from you, what is it you want to make sure you understand? And that way, she can tailor her presentation to your specific needs. She can cover a lot of material, but she doesn't want to spend a lot of time on issues that you might already have figured out, but really focus on the areas that you want to learn more about or understand. Or, I'm sure she's somewhat prepared to critique. You know, this part of your code or this part of your ordinance could use a facelift, could use some attention and make it a little bit easier, both for administrative purposes and understanding with the public. Just modernize some of that stuff. So, you know, what would be some of the best practices when it comes to your ordinances and how to make them better, more user-friendly? So, be thinking on that. I think that might be helpful for her to know, what is it that you want to make sure you cover during this discussion today? And then she can go down that rabbit hole with you and cover that material.
Do you want to know that now? So, Kelly has...
Yeah, well, why don't we have Kelly introduce herself, and then we'll open it up for questions? How about that? Because we want to make sure that you see her as a credible source. So, Kelly, you want to introduce yourself and tell a little about your background?
Sure. So, hi, everybody. Thank you for having me here today. Kelly Lynch. I am Deputy Director and Legal Counsel for the Montana League of Cities and Towns. I've been there for just a little bit over five years now. Prior to my work at the league, I was a planner in private practice, then a land use attorney in both private and public practice. And then I worked at the Montana Department of Commerce under the head of the Community Development Division for almost 10 years, running their Community Technical Assistance Program, which is their Land Use Planning Technical Assistance Program, and then also running the Treasure State Endowment Program, Coal Board, CBT, those kinds of community development programs and grants that you know about. I'm a Certified Planner, AICP. So, that's... My background is almost entirely in legal world is almost entirely with respect to planning. So, I like to present on these things and help people kind of dig through them and figure out what they're working on. Let me go over the outline real quick, and then we'll open it up to kind of like, what in particular that you guys feel like you're struggling with that you need to discuss? So, let me share my screen. Can you see the screen and the PowerPoint?
Yes.
So, what I plan on going over today is just kind of the basics about Boards of Adjustments. First, talk briefly about local land use authority, decision-making, what the process is, what types of decisions there are, and who makes those decisions typically in Montana and then specifically in NS. And then talk about the Board of Adjustment, the three grounds that Boards of Adjustments are typically given for acting in Montana, variances, appeals, and then also what are called 402 hearings. I don't think you guys do 402 hearings, and the law has just been changed to take that out of the requirements for the board. So, if we want to make sure that you are addressing that, that's something we can talk about. And then finally, I wanted to go over kind of establishing the evidence and the findings for your decision-making, because that really is the crux of making sure what you do is defensible. But with that, if you guys wanted to talk, make sure that I talk specifically about issues that you guys are struggling with or dealing with in NS, I think that would be helpful.
May I interrupt, please? One, this is our first meeting, so we're not dealing with anything yet. Would it be possible for you to email that PowerPoint now so that we can make notes on it as you proceed?
Sure.
Email it to where you wanted to go, Ginger? It would be to me, Kelly.
Wait, I send you guys the right one here.
Thank you for pointing that out.
No problem. All right. Okay. So, let me ask though, when you say it's your first meeting, but you guys have not had a Board of Adjustments before this?
Correct.
But the ordinance doesn't look new.
I think it was borrowed from Gallant County or in Bozeman, City of Bozeman.
That's what my guess is.
Well, we... I guess historically, there maybe was one?
Uh-uh.
No?
No.
Or the first.
The first, and...
Aren't we lucky?
Our responsibilities and duties are covered in one, two, three, four, six typewritten pages in the current zoning.
Well, hey, well, that's...
And frankly, I'd like to have somebody address this, is that I'm not sure we will ever be pulled together to help give direction on zoning for the circuitous method that people have to go through to even get to a board for a hearing. So, if you will read whatever we have in our code here, I'd like to know, it probably would take oh, from initial seminal to being through the zoning board here, two years to go from step zero to the final step? It just doesn't seem reasonable.
Okay, well, I'm... Well, let's talk about what it should look like. And...
Ginger, I haven't gotten the presentation yet. Did you send it?
I did. But I can... I won't... I cannot start until we actually get it.
It should be immediately, so I'm not sure why it wouldn't be in your email yet.
Yeah.
Right there, sent.
Well, we can ask other questions that are off-topic a little bit from that.
Sure.
All right. I have a question. So, what are the limitations of the board? I know that we have five members, and when we review something out of the ordinary, I'll use that word, that comes under our purview, we have to have a majority that votes on it, correct? Since we are a board of five, so we would have to be four out of five or three out of five?
Three out of five.
Three out of five.
Simple, right? And then that is just a recommendation to our Town Council, right? It carries... There's no weight in their decision on the...
Is it to the council or the planning or the county planning board?
Well...
Town Council.
Town Council. So, we are merely just a recommendation in the whole process, correct?
So...
I'll add to that. The way it's written, we are only a crutch
That's right.
to the Town Commission that wants... Our decision has no meaning if the Commission wants us to keep going the other way. And it will delay, I'm going to say up to two years. I'm really interested about improving the language of the Town's code to have this be an effective system for serving the citizens and development. I wondered, did the Town provide you the current language? So, you reviewed it before this training session?
It's called Title XI, Zoning Regulations.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure we're on the same page. So, I read all of your zoning provisions that relate to the Board of Adjustment. So, first, I want to make sure we're talking about the Board of Adjustment and not some other board.
The zoning Board of Adjustments, ZBAs, on Page 11-1-7 through 11-1... I think it ends at Page 11-1-12.
11-1-9 is where it starts.
Oh, I have been on... Oh, that's paragraph 11-1-9, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. So, I think we are talking about the same language. And no, you are not an advisory board. You are a final decision-maker, which is...
Yeah, that's not...
Not what it says.
That's not how we understand it written.
Yeah.
So, you'll have to send me what you're looking at, because it's not in your code that I was looking at.
So, then I have part two to the question. If we are the final decision-maker, are we in the firing line of a lawsuit on either side if somebody decides that what we decided is not in their best interest and their project goes south?
So, that I can definitely answer, yes. The lawsuit would be against the county or the... Sorry, the City Board of Adjustment, Town Board of Adjustment.
Okay, so then we would fall under their umbrella of protection as far as legal insurance?
Yeah, as a DNO, yes. But you'll have to confirm that with the city, not me.
Gotcha, okay.
So, because I'm sharing my screen, let me pull up what I was looking at on my phone. And then, Ginger, if you want to send me what you guys are looking at that's different, make sure we're looking at the same thing. But it shouldn't change the presentation much. I mean, the difference would be whether or not you're advising on these items or you're the final decision on the items.
Gotcha.
Either way, you're going to act the same.
So, John, excuse me just a second. John, in other towns or other places, the Board of Adjustments is the final decision, right?
No.
Huh?
But if you look at B, right? We have the power to grant variances, modify provisions
Right.
and rule on interpretation.
So, we are the final?
Somewhere in there it says to the contractor.
Well, there's no end to it. The appeal of final decision, you know, whatever you call it final, but you can appeal it and it goes back to the Commission. Finally, notices of appeal of our decisions.
Ginger, did you get my email?
She did. She's actually making copies.
Okay, perfect.
I was going to ask you more... Go ahead.
I think I'm going to probably hit on these kinds of general questions, for sure. I just wondered if there was like one area in particular, you know, like some BOAs will be like, you know, "We're really having trouble with this one grounds of the variance." If you could really hit on that, that'd be helpful. What you guys are hoping is to get a good training and overview of the whole approach? I think I'm going to hit on all of that for you. And as we go through it, why don't you just jump in as we're on each topic and kind of say, "Hey, what about this? What about this? I'm confused." I am reading what you guys are looking at, and you are the final decision-maker. Now, there is a process that the Town can go through to reserve for itself the final decision on variances, but they haven't done that in this case.
I'm not doubting you in your advice, but where does it say that?
Right. If you have a copy in front of you, paragraph 11-1-8, paragraph C, sub-paragraph C, says that, to me, the Town Commission can overrule basically anything that we're recommending.
We're supposed to recommend the Town Commission.
11-1-8 is the zoning commission. You are not the zoning commission.
Okay. The zoning Board of Adjustments says... I'm sorry about that.
That's okay. So, 11-1-9, number B, prescribes what your powers are. And the first one is that you grant variances. Number two provides what the... Which types of variance is granted? And number three says that you know on the interpretation made by the zoning administrator. The appeals from any interpretation of the ordinance made by the zoning administrator. That's not all appeals. That's a particular type of appeal that you hear.
Clarify that out.
It does. So, in order for anything to get to us, the person presenting the permit would have to have been denied by the Town Council, and then they would appeal it to us, correct?
No. So, two ways it'll come to you. One is that they apply for a variance from the zoning ordinance, and we'll talk in detail about what that looks like and what it means. And then the second way it could come to you is if the zoning administrator interprets the ordinance in a way that the applicant disagrees with. They can appeal that interpretation to you to make a decision.
So, they don't have to necessarily use a hardship, correct?
So, that's something that we'll talk about in the language. Your ordinance is unfortunately conflicting whether or not you use hardship for the appeal. But you would use the hardship for the variance.
Okay. The... Another item that perplexes me somewhat is that, I don't know, a couple of years ago, if not longer, the Town advocated their planning responsibilities to Madison County. And if there is a, I'll call it simply, a complaint with the zoning decision on the development in or around the Town of Venice donut, what is our powers and involvement on an appeal that the county planning group or zoning group have made for a developer that's within the donut of the Town of Venice?
None.
Actually, are you kidding me?
No.
Because the Town controls that they go back and they lean on the basis of the Town's donut as being within their purview for control of growth and quality growth.
So, the only thing that's going to come to you is if someone believes that the zoning administrator incorrectly interpreted the ordinance.
Of the Town of Venice only?
Yep. But if you are... If the zoning...
Go ahead.
If the zoning ordinance being interpreted by the zoning administrator for anything in the donut, it's still not going to be a decision on a development that's getting appealed to you. It's going to be something like, "This is the type of use that is being proposed, and the zoning administrator has determined that that falls within commercial, and they disagree with that. They think it's industrial," or something like that. And it's not listed as the permitted uses. And so, they'll come to you to say, "Is it a permitted use or not?"
I really recommend that there be some clarification between the interagencies of the county and the Town of Venice.
That's not why she's here.
I know, right? It's just, you know, we're being trained on the language that... But the future growth we're facing, I don't know.
I think that once we go through this presentation, you're going to see that the Board of Adjustment is a pretty narrow, specific area of land law. You're not going to be looking at preliminary plats. You're not going to be looking at subdivisions. You're not going to be looking at zoning ordinance changes. You are going to be looking at two very specific areas of land.
So, I would recommend we let Kelly move forward her presentations and then ask questions as we're going through it that relate to the training.
You guys have the copy now?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I'm going to start real broad, and I'm going to narrow us down to your specific roles. Generally speaking, localities have the authority to regulate in the land use area. It's been upheld by both the Montana and the US Supreme Courts, and it's essentially referred to as the police power. So, that's the area in which you are operating when you work on land use issues. There are two types of governing local governments in Montana. Self-governing powers, of which NS is one, and general governing power. Self-governing powers can essentially do anything that the state statute is silent on, doesn't preempt you from doing. So, it's a greater level of authority. General governing powers, which are the majority of Montana governments, can only do what the state statute specifically allows them to do and specifically provides for. So, as we're going through this, just remember, NS is a self-governing power, so you might see things above and beyond what you see in the state statute, because NS has the authority. Okay, just wanted to quickly touch on kind of the four types of decisions that you'll see in the land use arena. There's legislative actions, which are general rules, policies, ideas for the community as a whole that everyone in the community's come together and talked about and are adopted for the community as a whole. So, this would be the growth policy itself, the zoning ordinance itself, subdivision regulations themselves. When they're not being applied to particular property, just the adoption of those ordinances is a legislative action. Typically, the courts give a lot of discussion to the decision-maker when they're engaged in a legislative action. Quasi-judicial actions are when the body is actually applying those rules or those policies to a particular property. So, you get an application that is asking for the application of one of those legislative policies to that property. The body gives specific notice, usually by mail, to neighboring property owners, and then they conduct an evidentiary hearing where they take comments... And then they conduct an evidentiary hearing where they take comments, they take reports, they take all of that evidence in the hearing. They're not allowed to gate ex parte contact. So let's say someone comes up to them at the grocery store and says, hey, you've got this application in front of you for a zoning permit. I want you to approve that. You can't talk to people about that. And the courts have a stricter standard of review for quasi judicial actions. The reason I point this out is because when you act as the Board of Adjustment on a variance or an appeal, you are acting in a quasi judicial capacity. So that's the kind of action that they're asking.
Will you repeat that, when we act on a variance? I lost what you said.
Or an appeal, you are acting in a quasi judicial capacity.
So, question on that.
Yeah.
We cannot discuss this at all unless we, it is a public notice that we're discussing this action, correct?
That you're at the public hearing on the action, correct?
In other words, what I'm saying is we cannot discuss it amongst ourselves in a closed room.
That's correct. Nor can you discuss it with members of the public.
Gotcha. So, but let's say that, that three of us are in public. We can be in public together so long as we're not talking about an action, correct?
Unfortunately, no, but it doesn't get enforced. I mean, we all live in Montana and everyone knows the situation and I think, for the most part, people understand. We all end up at high school meetings together, high school sports together, parades together. And the idea is try to, at all times, remember that three of you together constitutes a forum of this board. But you absolutely cannot discuss issues that are supposed, that are coming in front of the board. But on top of that, you would probably want to try and minimize three of you meeting at one place at one time whenever you can.
Gotcha. All right. I just want to clarify this.
Yeah. And you know, things happen. Someone might come up to you at the grocery store and say, hey, you have this item, you know, it's really controversial. And they, and they start talking to you about it. You know, you need to get comfortable telling them right away, I can't talk to you about this item. Um, and another thing you can do is when you start your hearing, you can each go around and talk about whether or not someone did come up to you and just get that on the record. I didn't talk to them about it. I told them I couldn't talk to them. You know, just see what happens. See what feels best for you and, and your structure. Okay, two more types of actions. Advisory actions, that's what you guys were talking about. In some cities and towns, they do use a Board of Adjustment as an advisory body. From what I read in your code, the town has not set it up that way. But you will see that happen with like, the planning board can be advisory to the council. The zoning commission can be advisory to the council. That's what you saw in 11 1 8. Where they do the drafting sometimes, the hearing, take the evidence and then they make recommendations only on the action. And then finally administrative action. These are the, these, some of these will be what you guys will be asked to hear and appeal on. Administrative actions are essentially when there's little to minimum or no discretion involved. So it's easier for the person at the counter or the person in the office to make decisions. Let's say you come in for a permit for a single family home in a single family zoning area. It's straightforward. It's easy. They, they get that permit. So the person just makes sure they meet the standards in their plan and ends up with a permit. But then there's almost always an appeals process from those kinds of decisions. And in your case, you're being asked to take appeals from the zoning administrator when someone is alleging that they did not interpret the ordinance correctly. So not, um, not necessarily the issuing of a zoning permit that they didn't interpret the ordinance correctly.
So, question. All, all variances have to come to us, correct?
Yes.
So, so if there are any variances, and this is for Ginger, all of them would have to be recommended, we, we would have to see all variances from, actually from the day that we were sworn in, correct?
Yes, from the zoning ordinance.
Okay, I'm just, right. But, so, so I just wanted to make, to make that clear that it's an automatic process. It's, it's not if the town council decides. It's an automatic process. Those variances come to us, okay?
Yep. The way it's written. Um, that application will come, the way it's written, the application comes into the zoning administrator. The zoning administrator, you know, makes sure the application's complete and then pushes that on to you. They don't make decisions on it.
Do we have a mailbox here? I'm just saying, process wise, would it go into a mailbox and we just come in and... We don't have to answer that now, just...
Well, and typically what happens is the zoning administrator will be the one that will basically set you up for a hearing. Make sure you get all the documents, does the notice, does all of that work for you. And usually gives you a staff report. So that's something you'll want to talk about as well. Will you receive a staff report telling you the grounds for the variance? What this person has provided? Gives you any documentation that they have related to that? And then sometimes even gives you a recommendation.
So that last part again gives you what?
A recommendation. That can make your job easier. Okay. Who are the decision makers? This might help clarify where you guys fall in this process. So the town council are the final decision makers on a whole bunch of decisions. They are the ones that adopt the growth policy. They adopt the zoning ordinance. They adopt the subdivision regulations. They make the final decision after getting a recommendation. They make the final decision on zoning amendments, on plaits and on conditional use permits. And then they can make the final decision on variances and appeals from administrative decisions. But in your case, they've decided that you will make the final decision on variances and you'll make the final decision on appeals as to the correct interpretation of the ordinance. The planning board is just an advisory body. It has essentially two roles in almost all communities in Montana. It drafts and recommends the growth policy to the town council. And then it also reviews and makes recommendations on subdivision plaits. It can be asked to do a whole bunch of other things to make recommendations on, but typically those are the two. And a lot of times it'll hold a public hearing and be acting in a quasi judicial manner with respect to those subdivision plaits. That's typically what the planning board does. Zoning commissions are specific to zoning. They are also an advisory body only. They're the ones that make the recommendations on zoning regulations to the council. They can also be asked to make recommendations on zoning specific decisions, typically conditional use permits, which is when a, a use is permitted but only with conditions placed on it. Um, and then they can hold public hearings on those quasi judicial decisions like CUPs, conditional use permit. Still not the final decision. And then the final is you, Board of Adjustment, which can be advisory and/or the final decision makers. Um, and we've talked about the fact that you are the final decision maker on the variances and not very specific appeal. And your decision, if challenged, goes straight to district court. Um, if the council doesn't like that setup, it can reserve for itself the final decision making authority. And you guys can be recommendation only, which is not the way it's set up, but you guys could have that happen, Ginger and the city, if that's something the town council wanted.
So question. Would it be fair, under the current conditions, on the Board of Adjustment, that we strike advisory? We are the final decision maker currently, the way it's set up?
You are, yes.
Question.
Yep.
On your statement on that slide, it says council can reserve to itself all or some of final decisions on matters that go to the board. Uh, when do they have to decree that? Is that a, should be a permanent statement within the code of the town? Or do on each, they say each filing, they can say, well, you, you make your decision, but on this filing for this group, uh, we want to reserve to itself?
Yeah, no. They would have to change their ordinance.
They would have to do it uniformly through the building code group in a statement? Is that, is that what I heard?
Yeah. 11 dash 1 dash 9 would have to be changed to say that you were advising them as to variances.
Okay.
So it's not an either or. It's one way or the other.
Right. This slide is just to show you, generally speaking, how it's set up in Montana law.
Well, I, I guess I think that should be clearer somewhere in these documents.
Well, it is in 11.1.9. See, this is just her overview.
I know.
Okay. So what's the structure and rule? Uh, what's the structure and rule of the Board of Adjustment? The Montana state statute says that you have to have at least five and not more than seven members. NS has five, so you fit right in there. The town council can delegate all, some or none of its decision making to the Board of Adjustment. And NS, as we've gone through in 11 dash 1 dash 9, has delegated the following authority to grant variances and here appeals on interpretation of the ordinance. 402 hearings are not mentioned in there, so just strike that out on your page. I have a question about that because I can't... I don't want to make things any more confusing for you than they need to be. So the final decisions that you make are appealable to district court. There's a process for that in the state statute. And your council has not made the advisory, but they... All right. So let's talk about what your says with respect to variances. Variances generally are a way to allow some way, someone to build in a way that's prohibited by the zoning requirements. And your stat, your ordinance is very specific that you can grant variances from this list of standards. Step backs, which are the space that you need to give between a property line and typically, um, about yards, how much space has to be dedicated to a yard on a property. Area, which can sometimes be the same as height and bulk, but it also can be lot coverage. If there are restrictive lot coverage, you could give someone variance from that. Parking requirements. And then loading requirements, which is an also, also part of the parking order. And it's going to be specifically committed to industrial.
Question. I'll say it this way. I, I, I feel or I believe that the town is considering other subcategories of zoning such as, uh, landscaping and others of them, I'll call it the big sub level in the ordinances. How does that? Or is there a relationship between adopting a new requirement and then having to authorize it to be part of the zoning Board of Adjustments in the future? How, do they have to do a one, two step on that? If they adopt a new requirement, do they also need to designate that it goes under the ZBA at that time?
For being able to grant variances from new regulations.
Yes, that, that's what he was asking.
For new regulations.
Yeah. I mean, I would say it's a little unusual to have a list like this in the ordinance. You were going to go back to your ordinance, I, I would probably take the language out.
I have no idea what you said.
I don't have an idea.
Say that again.
I, I think that this language is very odd. This list.
What is odd?
What you just, what you explained to her, she said is, is very odd. So the situation, just so we all understand, Kelly, you're saying that the situation that John presented would be a very odd situation, correct?
No, I think it's odd that your ordinance contains this very restrictive list of what you're allowed to grant ordinances, grant variances from.
That list, okay.
This list.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You don't typically see that. Um, you know, typically it's that you're going to grant, you're going to grant variances from any of the development standards. Now, you also have a restriction, if you haven't already seen it, 11 1 9. And let me find, I'm sorry, I have it on my phone here so I can, at the same time I can see it. If you look at 11 dash 1 dash 9, C, it, it says that you are not allowed to grant variances for use. That's... Yeah, so if someone came to the city and said, I want to, um, I'm in a residential zone and I want to do a bakery. So I'd like a variance from the ordinance to allow me to operate a bakery in a residential zone. That would be a use variance. And your town does not allow for use. That's a good thing because what they need to do is get a zoning amendment. Which is not heard by you. It's heard by the zoning commission. Because you have that restriction built in, I don't think you need this very specific list of development standards that you can grant variances from. I would just, if I were writing the ordinance, I would say, allow them to hear variance from any development standard.
So what's the, Ginger, what's the process? You know, based on that comment, if we wanted to recommend that they take out 11 dash 1 dash 9 be two?
Okay, so that, that constitutes an ordinance change. So you would have to present that. You would have to strike what Kelly's talking about. And if you want additional...
And if you want additional language in there, you would add it at that time. And it would go through two public hearings. Your first reading, first public hearing, then second public hearing. And then if it... it can be adopted at the second one, but would then take 30 days for it to take effect.
But we or someone would have to request the council consider that?
Yes.
Okay.
As an ordinance change.
Okay. Thank you. Back to you, Kelly.
Okay. So Montana State statute is a origin of the grounds for issuing a variance. And these are essentially repeated in your ordinance The state statute says that these are... meaning you have to make sure all of them are met. So the variance or the result of variance cannot be contrary to the public interest. That's a finding you'll have to make. A literal enforcement of the zoning ordinance on this property would result in unnecessary hardship owing to conditions that are unique to the property. That's a finding you'll have to make. And then that the spirit of the ordinance is observed and substantial justice done. That's another finding you'll have to make.
Question on number one. Give me an example of how we would find the public interest portion of this.
Yeah, so a good example is a case out of Bozeman where a family wanted to build an extension onto their home. And it went into the corner of a corner lot. And the whole setback there had been provided for because there needed to be visual sightlines for the corner, the road intersection there. And so when they asked to build into that corner, people couldn't see around the corner anymore. So if you granted it in that case, it would have been contrary to the public interest.
Gotcha. And so in other words, we don't have to get public approval. It's just our interpretation of the public interest.
Yeah, and it's really... it's really a discussion about what is that standard intended to protect?
Gotcha.
Question. It's come up a couple times recently, building height. You know, the... What the code says on a maximum building height, let's say it says 25 feet or 35 feet, and the building is 36 feet. I could see that coming to the Board asking for a variance because it's only one foot. Now, I... It's case by case, but is that contrary to the public interest on height? I know the setback in traffic at 25 feet on a corner, that's one thing, but...
Right, so again...
Go ahead, please.
Oh, sorry. Again, the same question would be asked. Why do you have height requirements? Is it... typically, height requirements are related to community character. And so that could be the public interest, right? And so a foot over may or may not meet that, depending on the condition of the property and why they need that variance. But remember, that's only one of the grounds, and you have to find all of them. So they're going to have to say why it's a hardship, and we'll get into that to them, based on conditions of the property as to why they need that foot there.
Oh, may I then question? Parking requirements, minimum parking requirements in and around businesses, is that an unnecessary hardship category if the minimum parking is missed by one space or... Is that defined as hardship? As an example, the business can't be there because they don't have enough parking?
So...
They don't short the small amount?
That would be an example of you having to have hardship discussion about that. So let me go into the specifics on hardship, because I can give you some good factors to discuss when talking about hardship. So this is the state statute, right? These are the three that are in the state statute. They actually come from a federal model act that was passed in 1926, and almost all states will have them. So you guys are right in line with that. NS does add a couple of things that I wanted to point out to you. First of all, you have a fourth ground. And again, this is in 11-1-9. B1B. That the result of the variance has to be consistent with the goals, objectives, and the policy of the comprehensive plan. Now, this isn't necessarily a bad thing. You want all your land use decisions to be in what's called substantial compliance with the growth policy, because that's the... Right, that's the blueprint for how you're going to develop in your town. But I have a... I'm going to point out a couple of things to you that as a town, Ginger, you guys should do. Your growth policy was done in 2014. Correct me if I'm wrong, if there's a new one.
You're in the process of drafting a new one.
Yeah, it's still the current one.
Okay, perfect. So it's outdated.
Yes, Kelly, it is outdated.
So that... just keep that in mind. When you tie something like that from a specific variance to consistency with the growth policy, that if your growth policy gets outdated, that can cause problems.
Question or statement at this point. The town of Ennis' growth policy, like many other communities' growth policies, now I'm going to buy verbiage here, is full of flowery and non-definable vocabulary.
Wish list.
And, you know, to the environment set forth by the historic town. You know, I just made that up. It will be challenging to include a statement on our findings that our findings are in... are consistent with the result of the growth policy. It's just words. It's... I've studied the growth policy of this town and it's not very definitive, other than having lots of flowery words to describe. They're waving their hands while you're talking.
No, you've hit the nail on the head. That's exactly what I was going to say. Not only that, but you are very specific here in this language. It has to be consistent with the goals, objectives, and policy, which essentially turns your variance grounds of four to your variance grounds of 20... of 32, because now you have to add the 28 goals and objectives in your growth policy to what you're making a finding on. That is, I would say you should go in there and change. I think you could say something along the lines of the result of the variance must be in substantial compliance with the comprehensive plan.
How about striking that statement entirely and then modifying the code as time goes on to bring the code into compliance with the growth policy? You know, if we're having definition of terms that is in the code that anybody could interpret and rely on.
So the code does have to be inconsistent. The code does have to be consistent with the growth policy. When you adopt that zoning ordinance, you specifically have to make a finding as the town council that it's in compliance with the growth policy. But see, someone here is asking for you to give them a variance from the code. So there's some... There's some grounds for the idea that you would want to make sure that you're not getting out of compliance with the growth policy. I would say that when you're making determinations specific to the development standards and not use, it's probably going to be pretty difficult for someone to come up with a proposal that's going to be inconsistent with the growth policy. So yeah, you could take it out entirely. You could make it more of a general statement. You know, there's things that you could pick out, some specific ones that you care about, that are objectives that you care about, but I'm just going to throw it out there, Ginger, that I think this could some difficulty for the Board of Adjustment.
Okay, Kelly, thank you.
Sure. So the other place where NS is a little bit different than state statute.
Hey, Kelly, Ginger, are those six and... six goals, 22 objectives in here?
No, they're in your growth policy.
They're not in this.
Growth policy. Growth policy is a little bit...
But I could certainly get to you, even though it's out there. I'll get you guys a copy of the growth policy.
I already have one of Ginger's.
Okay.
I need one, Ginger. The current, the one that's... yeah, not the proposed.
Correct. Okay, Kelly.
Okay, so the other place that NS has gone a little bit different from the state statute, which is not unusual, but this one is kind of particular language to NS. When you talk about the hardship provision in 11-1-9... Pull it back up again, sorry. It's in B1B. It adds the language "to" or "of the land" after undue hardship, which is very odd. This provision, this grounds, right, for variance, is always about the conditions that are unique to the property. So you are looking at the property itself, and you're saying, okay, and I've listed some there on my slide. Are there steep slopes? Are there wetlands? Is it a regularly shaped lot? Is it... what is it about that property that makes it difficult for them to conform to the development standards? And that's why they're asking for a variance. But the hardship isn't to the land. The hardship is to the...
Do you think that that use of "of" is a mistake, or was it intentionally put in there?
Well, it says owing to the circumstances unique to a specific property. And then it says resulted in undue hardship of the land. I've never seen that before. So I think that they were trying to get at this issue that there's something unique to the property, which is definitely the grounds. So just keep that in mind.
Shouldn't we have that... Have that language changed? I mean, shouldn't it be? Isn't that going to make it difficult for us?
No, I think if you take out "of the land" at the end of B, then you're correctly reflecting the grounds.
That's what I mean. Okay, so we take it out?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it just ends in hardship, correct?
Yeah.
So strike "of the land."
So I'm going to strike "of the land" and...
We want to ask them to strike it.
Yes.
Yeah, exactly. So let's pretend it's not... let's pretend it's not there, because I think... I wouldn't even know how you would begin to figure out hardship to land. But the conditions of the land, the conditions of the property, is what you want to be looking at. And in your application that you provide to folks to fill out, you want them to describe what is the problem with their property in particular that makes it so that they cannot meet the development standard? And I've listed some there. You might find others. It just depends on what the variance is for. I've seen one before. A good example sometimes is in a sign, a sign ordinance, asking for a height variance because the property was lower than the other properties. And so when their sign could only be at that height, it couldn't be seen from the main road.
Such as a town pub sign on a very high pole so you can see it before you come over the hill.
Right, but...
A variance here in town.
But... But it would have to be that the actual height, right, the actual height limit wasn't enough.
I... yes. I think I read that a hardship variance could not be founded on financial considerations. Is that right? Is that just what public health says, it's going to be too expensive? We might as well just hold their breath. Financial consideration?
Yeah, so let's talk about that. I wouldn't say that's a hard and fast rule, but it's one of the things that you want to look at. Forgive me for a second. I put unnecessary hardship part of the beginning of the slide, which is the state statute word. Your words are undue hardship. I really don't see any difference legally between those, but I wanted to acknowledge that you'll see a difference there. So here are some of the things that you'll want to talk about when you're talking about hardship. And you'll want them to provide information to you. One of the important things you want to make sure is whether or not they can still reasonably use the property. And particularly, can they still use the property for what you zoned it as? So a good example of this is if you have setbacks from a river, and it's of such width that they actually cannot build a home. And it's a residentially zoned property. So that's a financial issue, right? But it's also use of the property, and it could raise issues of a regulatory takings. There's an expectation when you zone a property that it can be used for that purpose. That's not a hard and fast rule, but it's something you'll want to think about when you're looking at someone's claim.
Is there a priority of order in reviewing something like that? I agree with what you say. If the house cannot be built with a setback from the river, but is there an order of priority that a board like ourselves should look at with maybe the financial part being the lowest of the priorities of the argument?
So a couple of things. I wouldn't say priority. I would say you'll just want to look at all of these things together. You definitely want to look at the peculiarity of that. You definitely want to look at the peculiarity of that property. So there's a chance that when the property is the same as everyone else's property, the town council knew what it was doing when it made that decision. Now, it's probably not the right decision, right? Because they could get themselves in trouble with the takings claim. But what is different about that property as opposed to other properties that are zoned that have that setback? Maybe it's a smaller lot. So while other properties have to build a house, this one is smaller and so didn't have the space to build the house. That's a good thing.
Yeah, you, you could go on forever here. If something, building a house on a lot and it's within the setback of the front and the setbacks of the sides, but the setback of the rear is off by two feet, so they'd be three out of four, you know, you have to make a judgment on that, but that's geometry. Geometry is fairly easy, like you were saying on the setback for a corner lot. It, it is either compliant or non-compliant to the site distance to go around the turn. I, I do think there's got to be some order of, of priority because when somebody comes in asking for a variance or a change, they'll use the shotgun method, much like you described. Oh, we bought the lot, then we found out that the river setback was such, dah 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 dah.
That's doubtful.
Yes, it'll cost us more money to redesign it with the architect.
Dang, you should have known what it was when you bought it.
I agree with you, but it's just that argument.
No, it's great. This is great. You guys are having exactly the kind of discussion you're going to have when the case comes to you. And I think my answer to you would be, the courts have not required a prioritization of these grounds. The courts look to see whether or not you have evidence to support your decision and you followed the process. Those are the two things they look for.
It will force people to think about what they're doing.
Well, make your footprint smaller.
You know, we're not there to solve their problem either.
That's right.
You know, well, you don't comply, your area of your house is too great for the ratio of the size of the lot. The answer is no. I mean, is that, that's black and white, how you can cut it. And then you go into the other discussions.
And you'll see there that last bullet point says it can't be self-created. That's specifically one of the things you'll want to look at. Did they purchase the property knowing that that restriction was there and now they just want to get out of it? Or another thing that you'll see a lot is they actually just go ahead and violate knowing that the restriction is there and hoping they don't get caught. And then when they do get caught, they come to you for a variance after the fact.
But that goes into enforcement, which is not part of our purview.
Do, yeah, so we, we don't have to look at if they do what you just described, built something knowing that it was outside of the zoning ordinance and then want a variance. We don't have to hear that, do we? Or do we have to hear those?
You do have to hear it because they can still ask for a variance, but they can't claim hardship because they've already built a thing and now you're going to make them take it out. That's not hardship.
So we would, so we would have to go through the entire process even though they, they broke the law and we would have to go through the entire process except for the hardship facts.
So who would bring this? You know, the zoning administrator was out with their measuring tape and found out someone built a house that is three feet too high for the residential area of where they are, then the town would have to bring it to us because the resident owner wouldn't bring it to us. It had to come out of enforcement somehow, an enforcement threat or fine.
Right. It's almost always a neighbor complaining.
I can understand that, but it's also, should be the town under enforcement too.
And it would be. It's not beyond this town to say, your sign is three feet too close to the road.
Yeah. I think where they have fallen songs in the building height.
Where you're not allowed to have a sign that flashes and changes.
Right.
Oh, yeah. Where you're not allowed to have a sign that has thirty percent of your building front edge.
Right.
Well versed on all that.
All right, Kelly.
That's okay. I just, I know we have a lot and I, you know, I appreciate that you guys are going to all hearing this for the first time. So we can do like a part two if that's helpful, but I want to try and get through stuff so at least you can leave here with, you know, your head wrapped around most of it. I wanted to point out to you that the court sees your decision as case by case and fat specific. So you are always taking the claim and the request that's in front of you, looking at everything that's specific to that request and the court knows that. And it's always going to be looking for two things, that you followed the process and you have evidence to support your findings. Those are literally the two things they care about. So you have to have evidence to substantiate your decision and you have to follow the process.
Quick, quick question. So, sorry, I don't, I, I know that we're trying to get, get through this. I'm, I'm still stuck on the public, what's the word that I want to use?
Public interest.
Public interest. The evidence would have to be written in the zoning, correct? That we would have to follow in, on that particular property? Because that seems really vague. Public interest seems pretty vague to me.
It's all vague.
No, I understand that. So, so our evidence could be how we interpret the public interest to be.
So, yeah, I mean, what I would want in a perfect world is to have the zoning administrator provide you some documentation about what the purpose of the standard is and what it's intended to protect. And then I would also want information from the applicant about why it doesn't violate, his proposal does not violate the public interest.
Okay. Well, that would be the evidence in other words, okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
It would be the, it'd be the burden put on the plaintiff to say why what they're asking does not, what the town report with the public interest. I mean, it's not ours to prove, it's theirs to prove.
So, thank you for bringing that up. That's my next bullet point. There are no burden of proof requirements set out in the Montana statute. The courts have really not touched on who has the burden of proof, other than to acknowledge that the statute doesn't say who has the burden of proof. But it's reasonable for you to rely on the evidence that they provide you. So if their evidence isn't, what they, what they provide you as an applicant, not sufficient for you to make those findings on the four categories that you have, the four grounds you have, or even one of them, then you can't make those findings. And I think it's helpful for the board to make sure that your application form is as very specific about that as possible. Tell them what the grounds are in the application. Have them answer the question. Have them point to the evidence and the, and their information that supports any of those findings.
That says a year later.
Yeah, it's back to 11-5.
Now, a great way to look at variances, this helps me, is to think about them in a way to avoid a takings claim. And, and the reason I say that, that's a pretty, you know, severe way of looking at it, but if you are going to follow the grounds of the law, variances are few and far between, right? You went through as a community, you made a decision about the setbacks you wanted, about the heights you wanted, about all these things you wanted. You as a community adopted that and expected all proper, property owners to abide by it. And now someone's saying, no, it shouldn't apply to me. That should be a pretty rare event, right? That being said, there are some communities where they literally never deny a variance. And it's because they just have not gone back through the process of, of changing their ordinance. You know, the, the setback is not followed by anybody. Everybody gets a variance to it, but they've never gone back and just changed the setback and that's what I would advise you to do. If you see a lot of variances coming in for the same thing, go back and change your ordinance or go back to the ordinance and say, no, we want it this way. I was going to quickly walk you through a pretty recent case on ord, on a variance. I think that would be helpful. Was that a yes?
No, sorry. We didn't think, we didn't think it was a question.
Okay. Um, okay, Yell, Carlson versus Yellowstone County Board of Adjustment. They had zoning in this area of the county, so it worked very similar to what you'll see in the municipalities. The ordinance said that you could have an accessory structure, but it was limited to square footage. The square footage here is weird because it was a ratio of how much property you had and you had to have eight foot setbacks from each side. The landowner built a detached garage with only three and a half foot setbacks. And it was over the square footage. It was also quite high. I've got some pictures here, I'll show you. Neighbor complained, planning staff issued a stop work order. So that's typically what will happen is the, the city will receive the complaint and they will go out on a code enforcement case, document that it's actually happening, and then tell the applicant, you either have to stop, you have to file a variance and move forward with the process for it to become legal. This plaintiff, even though he got a stop work order, he finished his garage and then filed for his permit for a variance. I'm sorry, he filed for his permit for the accessory structure. The city denied, or sorry, the county denied the permit and said, you have to get a variance because you're not getting the right setbacks and it's too big. And he waited almost three months to file for a variance. The Board of Adjustment denied the variance, said there was no hardship. He appealed it to the district court. All of the courts, including Montana Supreme Court, upheld the board's decision. So you can see in the red circle here, on the left, that's the property and there's the concrete pad has been poured in the back corner. And then if you look at the, at the picture down below, that's looking from that driveway down into the property where they accessed it. It's huge. It's almost the size of the house. So the court went through the grounds that the board found to deny his variance, very similar to the ones you have. There's some different ones though, so this will give you an example of how they can differ in each jurisdiction. First, it looked at the conditions unique to the property and the hardship. Hardship here was strictly economic. He basically just said, you're going to make me tear down the structure after I already built it, was his hardship argument. He didn't have any doubts for why his property was different, that he needed to meet the eight foot setback and have it be smaller. The court said, those are your own, you created your own hardship. Interestingly, Yellowstone County also has a grounds that you are to look at whether or not meeting the code would deprive that property owner of use, of rights that are enjoyed by others in the same district. So they had evidence on those grounds that he didn't have, he didn't have anything different from anybody else. Nobody else could do what he had done. And the variance that had been granted in the past weren't for what he was asked for, they were for smaller setback allowances. Yellowstone County also said that if you grant the variance, it can't confer special privilege on that person compared to others in the district. And they said, this would, we get to build this huge detached garage that nobody else can have. And then whether or not it was in harmony with the purpose and intent of the ordinance and the growth policy, so this is a much bigger, broader question. It doesn't require them to go through all the specifics of their growth policy. And the board just found that the garage was out of character with the area. But here's a great quote from the board. Go ahead.
No, I, this is a great example, but was there no building permit application and inspection versus the plat layout of, this is a mess, but did it get started on a failure to have a permit that was approved by the agency or county or whatever showing the layout of this stuff? Or, or did this problem start, I guess, with issue?
Yeah, he built the garage without going in for a permit. And in the middle of building the garage, his neighbor complained. And so he filed for the permit and it was denied. And so then he finished it anyway.
So the problem started with his childhood and parents.
Yeah, the parenting, the parenting of the person who did that, yeah.
Way back. So, but you'll like this quote because I think you can keep this in mind on any variance question that comes in front of you. The court's responsibility is not to examine the wisdom of your decision. It's to give you deference so long as the evidence supports your decision and you acted So just remember, those are the two things you need to do. You have the evidence to support the findings you make and you follow the process.
Just out of curiosity, was he forced to tear it out?
He was.
That's what should be.
So I talked a little bit about this, but I'll just hit on it again. If you have, if you, if you find yourself either looking at the same variance request over and over again, or you get in a position, and I would never imply that you would do this, but maybe a future board, where you end up granting lots of variances on the same standard. There are better approaches to take. And if, so if you find yourself in that situation, here are some options. Reevaluate the regulation, you know, make sure that it reflects and is doing what you intended it to do in the first place. You might, you know, there's no reason for that anymore. Reevaluate the process. Are your grounds too difficult or are they too easy? Are you guys struggling with one of the grounds a lot and really need some help or change or new language? Remember you're a self-governing power, so you have a lot of flexibility there. And then, and then think about maybe providing some flexibility in the development standard. Lots of communities are moving from what's called Euclidean zoning, which is, you know, residential's here, commercial's here, industrial's here, none of them is so mixed. You could, some places are moving to what's called form-based zoning where you just... You could, some places are moving to what's called form-based zoning, where you just essentially let the applicant try and meet some of what you want it to look like, and you aren't so concerned about specific setbacks or specific height requirements. It's more of a community character reflection with lots of photos to help folks understand what you want it to look like. So there are some other options out there. That's big-picture stuff. Just keep in mind that if you start to struggle with issues with variances, there are some Okay, that's variances. You also are asked to look at appeals when the zoning administrator has allegedly incorrectly interpreted your ordinance. So like I said, where this typically comes up is you might be looking at use. In your ordinance, you'll have, you know, under the zoning districts, it'll say, "Here are all the uses that are permitted. Here are the uses that are conditionally permitted. Here are the uses that are prohibited." Sometimes someone comes in with a use that's not listed. Sometimes someone comes in with a use that could fall under a term that is in there but could fall under another term, and one interpretation is better than another for the applicant. Those are the kinds of things that I am thinking you will see in these types of appeals.
Question. Wouldn't that be addressed in the definitions in the code?
Not always.
Fair enough. If this, the town code has a long list of definitions of terms, that would not apply to an appeal?
Oh, it will apply. The definition will apply, and the definitions will be what your zoning administrator uses to make determinations about the zoning ordinance and how to apply it. But, but there will be situations in which someone comes up with a use or someone comes up with a question or a development standard, where the zoning administrator is going to have to make a call in how to interpret the ordinance and how it applies to that particular use or standard.
This is too simple on a setback. They define what setback is. And then somebody comes in and says, "Well, my interpretation of a setback is to the edge of the foundation of the structure that I'm putting in." And, but their rough line, I know this is addressed too, but the rough line extends out three or four feet beyond the edge of the foundation. Now, this is just a hypothetical. So the zoning administrator, if that gets into a debate, should go back and revise the definition of setback to include that situation. Maybe not that time we get caught, but the next time it should be redefined such that the setback includes, let's say, the edge of the roof rather than the edge of the foundation. That's all hypothetical. I'm not saying anything that's actual here, but that's where you could change your definition. I mean, in contracts, for years, you know, we would try to be smarter and change our definition because the contractor had been smarter than we were in interpretation.
Right. That should be what the town does after something comes up like that, is to go in and either define it or make clear how a particular use. But the applicant can't sit and wait for that to happen. As Ginger explained, it can be a couple months' process at minimum to get a zoning ordinance.
It'd be for the next time rather than the specific appeal at that time.
So I just wanted to point out that there is some guidance in your zoning code, and this applies to the zoning administrator as much as it applies to you, but you want to make sure that you kind of go through those and have a sense of how the zoning ordinance does to interpret words when it's not clear how something falls in to a requirement. So I just listed some of those out for you here. We don't need to go through them. They're in your ordinance, and you can probably spend some time on them. But just be aware that they're there.
Question. Does the legal, on an appeal, the court system move generally towards the lesser of the two restrictive definitions if there is a choice of definition of the word from here? I mean, what does the court do? Normally back, by term, back off, saying, "Oh, well, I can see that it was defined this way to the applicant." Or does the court, I don't know what they do. I mean, it probably depends on the judge, but...
So that deference to the local body is going to be the same as it was when you were making decisions on the variance. The court is going to look to see all of the process and that you have the evidence to support your decision. They don't want to get into day-to-day zoning decisions. You guys aren't going to like some of what I have to say. You can't believe what you've agreed to volunteer for here. It's important work.
It's actually fascinating. I mean, yeah, I mean, it's, if we, when and if we get a case, it will be fascinating to go through it, I think.
You'll be hearing from us.
It really is the, you know, the down and dirty of the process, right? Of how, how we have, kind of how government works when it comes to day-to-day land use So you have a pretty specific process described in the ordinance for appeals. Didn't put the specific. It's, I believe, 11-1-10 talks about your appeals process. It talks about who appeals from who. You'll see your disgust in there. However, Ginger, I would note, in this section, they're referred to the zoning board of appeals. I think that needs to change to reflect board adjustment.
Okay, Kelly, thanks. So are we using the word board of appeals and board of adjustments? Is that the same thing?
Well, there's nothing in your ordinance that talks about a board of appeals except in the appeals section, so I think it was just a mistake. I think there's no, nothing for zoning board of appeals, so. So it just goes through the filing, the notice of appeal, how notice goes out, the scheduling of the hearing, and then the procedure for the hearing. So you'll want to make yourself familiar with that. And then G, so 1, sorry, 11-1-10G is really the meat of your decision making. And I quoted a couple of sections from that here on this slide just to point them out to you. And again, we get back to this issue of following the law and having the evidence to support So here's the one thing, Ginger, I wanted to point out. I mentioned this right at the beginning. You guys might not have understood what I was saying at that point. But if you go under the section of your statute, which is in a different place, for And I believe it's, sorry, I'm trying to make sure I can get to everything here.
11-5.
Is it 11-5? Yeah. If you go under 11-5, and right there in the very beginning, 11-5-1, it has some language about zoning code appeal, the interpretation of the code, and the variance application. The language in here, in the beginning part of here, is different than the language under appeals for when someone can appeal on the grounds upon which they can appeal. And that's different from the authority given to the board of adjustment. I would just want to make sure that all of that language is consistent. And here's an example. Here it says...
All language is consistent.
Yeah. Here it says, "The zoning board of adjustment grants variance from the code here appeals from interpretations of the zoning administrator." So those are the two grounds we've talked about. And it says, "Where hardships would result." Well, there's nothing else about an appeal having to be based on a hardship. That's a variance question. So that, it just needs to be cleaned up.
Kelly, are you the person or your agency that we would suggest the town council send these regulations to for recommending how to clean them up?
No, that would be your town attorney.
Okay. And then would you review them? Because they've probably been cleaned up already.
Sometimes I do. This is pretty old. That's why I'm kind of surprised you guys are meeting for the first time when you said that, because I looked at this, and they were adopted in 2002.
Yeah, well, things don't move real fast around here.
I get it. I get it. So I do help work with town attorneys and help them, you know, if they want me to review something or brainstorm stuff, I'm happy to do that. But it is based on my availability in terms of what's going on with the legislature, what's going on with our big projects at the league. So really just a matter of workload.
So Kelly, just to follow up on that, there's been three specific places where you said that the town should clean this up, this being one of them. How would you recommend we change this wording to reflect earlier? Just take out where hardships will result?
That would be one of the things, only for, with, I would just cross-reference to the grounds for variance. You know, I don't think you need to repeat it here, right? This is just a section for the form for the application. You don't need to say this stuff here. Just have the application here.
All right. Have you seen other places in which information is basically been repeated, but it doesn't need to be? You know, if you're, again, in my experience, it's just almost lethal if you have one section that says something, and then somebody feels in another section they almost repeat the same thing. But I think the existing town code, on my review years ago, different mayor and everything, they could not resist addressing the same subject in several different places. And that's the town attorney, too, I would imagine.
Yeah. I, I mean, I think all of this, there's language in here about where you submit the application and answering the questions. That's fine. But this kind of opening language here where you're repeating the grounds for variance, and then there's also language that says, "Any person aggrieved by a zoning administrator decision may appeal that decision to the board." That's way broader than the language in your authority in 11-1-9 that says, "You're only hearing appeals about interpretation." You know, someone alleging that they've interpreted the language incorrectly. Those are, that's much narrower. So you just need to have a discussion. The town needs to have a discussion about what they really want you doing, and then making sure that the code is as clear as possible about your law and your grounds for making this provision.
Just leave that one alone.
Are we coming to it, Kelly?
We are coming to an end.
All right. Before you leave, we address, we sat here and we got hit by this tsunami today. And what are we allowed and not allowed? Can I, can I call Christian and say things like, "What do we get ourselves into with, you know, we're not, our job is not to clarify and clean up. Our job is to work within the framework that has provided us." What can we do between the four of us sitting here to say, "To work on this"? I don't think, from what you said, we could do anything.
No, we can, we can talk so long as we're not talking about, because we have no active cases.
Two of you can talk.
No, but wait a minute. No, she's nodding yes. We, could, can the four of us talk? Because we have no cases in front of us outside of this room.
So, so you can talk, you can talk as the four of you, but it's a public meeting. Right? As soon as, as soon as you have a forum of you in a room together, you are a public meeting. And so notice that.
So we have, so do we have to give public notice of it prior to the meeting? Or do we give public notice after we've had the meeting?
Before.
Okay, before.
But you can do that as often as you want.
The two of us can go talk to somebody else about what we talked about.
Yeah, so, so we could do it in pairs, in other words. We can, two of us can talk and then, no?
So there's actually case law on holding what's called a serial public meeting, where you try to avoid the public meetings by meeting as less than a quorum and then communicating with less than a quorum and communicating with less than a quorum. But really, there's nothing for you to worry about in terms of holding public meetings. I assure you, no one is going to come. And you will, you'll just be able to sit there and talk and have like a work session, just agendize it as a work session on the language related to zoning board of adjustment. You guys can talk about the issues you see, write them up, send a report into Ginger and the town council about what you think should be, they should take a look at.
So all we have to do is just tell Ginger we want to have a meeting, and she does the announcement.
So kid, you know what it's like herding cats, right? So in trying to herd cats, we don't need to have that public. We can just send emails about when you're available to meet.
Are you, is that a question to me or Ginger?
It has to go through Ginger.
She initiates it.
Yeah. And, and just because you mentioned email, I will also mention that the courts have found that if you all email each other about this topic and this, you are also violating the public meeting law.
So if you email talking about getting together to have a discussion, you don't talk about the topic, you're still violating the law?
No, that's fine.
That's fine.
You can talk about like, "When can we meet?" But it's, it's usually easier to just have Ginger do all of that for you. She'll figure out when you can meet. Say you want to have a meeting. She'll figure out, she'll do the notice. I don't want to speak for Ginger, sorry, Ginger, but she'll do the notice. She'll make sure that you're following the law, and then you guys can meet and have a work session.
Ginger doesn't have much to do during the day, so she'll do it.
Right. She didn't hear anything you said, but she heard what he just said.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I feel like I'm yelling at you guys, but I know you didn't, you couldn't hear me, so I'm trying to speak as loud as possible. Sorry.
No, you're fine. It's almost the other way around.
So I don't need to go through these last two pages if you don't want me to. It was just more about how you... It was just more about how you, you know, what are some tips and tricks for making it good that you support your decision with the evidence? And so you can read through these on your own. I've talked about them several times now, so.
Well, I like it because you're trying to keep us out of jail.
That's exactly right. Well, at least the city.
Thank you for informing us and helping us. I appreciate it. It's been very helpful.
Very good.
You'll hear from us.
Okay.
I have one final question.
Yeah.
What is the practice of having the town attorney sit in with our discussions and things? You know, so that, you know, they usually, or sometimes sit in with the town commission and says, "Oh, you can't say that," you know. What's, is it normal to have the town attorney sit in on board discussions and decisions? To make sure that it's in compliance with the law?
It's really usually dependent on resources. So if you have in-house counsel, and I'm not sure what your town attorney is, if he's on contract, then they tend to use them more sparingly than if they're in-house. And then also, it's just a matter of practice, you know, what, what did the town hire them to do? What's their workload like? You know, unfortunately in Monchee, our county attorneys are all, they're both prosecutors for infracton and criminal, and then also civil attorneys. So they are very stretched for time.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Dan, I think we wrapped up in time.
Perfect timing. I apologize. I had to duck out to attend to another conference call. Actually, I was meeting with the Madison County Finance Director. But anyway, thank you, Kelly. I think this was very useful and helpful information. And I hope that the Board of Adjustments learned and feel more comfortable, maybe not completely, you know, confident, but at least more comfortable with your role, your responsibility, and kind of the systems that you have to occupy facilitating this aspect of decision-making in your community of evidence. So to let you know that we are available at the center to do additional training. You know, I'm sure we'll probably be getting and connecting with Ginger here shortly to provide a training for city council. And maybe there might be part of that training that might be relevant to the Board of Adjustments and maybe the zoning commission or other local boards to receive some training opportunity. But with that, I think if there isn't anything else or any other questions you might have, we'll adjourn for the evening. I guess we'll just leave that as an opportunity. Does anybody have anything else they want to ask? Or is there anything in general or specific that you want to make sure is asked before we go?
No, I think we asked, so far.
We never know.
Okay. Enough to be dangerous, Ali, right?
Yep.
Well, on behalf of the Local Government Center, we just want to say thank you for your service for your community. It makes the, this whole system of democracy work when people like yourselves are willing to step up and serve in this capacity. Yeah. So thanks again for your service and putting yourself out there to make these decisions and on behalf of the community.
You bet.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Al.
We'll see you next time.
Bye.
Dan, hey, Ashley. Nice to see you back. Is Ashley, Ashley is at the Local Government Center in Bozeman at MSU.
Okay.
She's lovely for a brief time, but she works over there. She is, she's terrific.
Okay.
I don't want to break the law before this together, but.
It's a public, it's a public meeting.
Is it still public?
It is. You're still recording.
Okay, good. As you all know, conflict of interest is an issue that needs to be addressed. But I am, I have thrown my hat into the ring for selection of Jim Hart's replacement. And they're going through the selection process starting today. I have a commissioner meeting that I keep here rather than go there. So if I was fortunate or.
You're the only one.
There's five.
Five people so far?
A lady named Sabrina.
From Big Sky.
From Big Sky. Mark from the hardware store. Mike, the ex-veterinarian. And there's another one. I may not remember the name. But if I am so lucky, I'm going, probably the first thing we got to do is try to let her to cut off this committee because I can't do both conflict.
Let me just say, you were the one that selected.
Well, and I took my name.
Who knows?
I took my name out of there. We were the only two. When did these other people?
Well, the one, dude, Cory didn't go either.
No, I know that. But I mean, he had, he had called.
Well, anyway, there's five that I understand. I, I, do you believe that anybody tells you this stuff? It's all through.
Well, I talked to Dan Allhans and as of a few days ago, it was just you and I and then.
Yeah. I got my official notice from the Madisonian because they have gotten a list of names and they were asking for little write-ups from each one of us.
Well, you'll get it.
I don't know. I have a lot of money, Big Sky.
And I knew that you were in the running and clearly.
We'll just see what happens. You know, don't count your chickens.
Stand up with it, Jim, and I will.
Do you know when you send emails to the county commissioner, they end up with the same person's email box?
They don't understand what you're saying.
Send it to the woman that's the administrative assistant to the commissioners?
Yeah, Laura, right?
They all go to her. So when I send emails to the commissioners?
Oh, yeah.
They all, she, I got them both. I said, okay, thanks.
Yeah, that's, that's the way it works, I guess. So.
Well, where's Tricia?
I don't know. I sent her a text saying, are you coming? And I haven't heard back from her.
Ginger has heard. We have some other business to attend to. Ginger or you?
She's in the office. She can't hear you.
It'll be a couple of useful work, interesting. The zoning board, or not the zoning board, the. My guess is, as the, as there's appeals, and then, and I'm just hypothesizing here, and we cannot defend, I guess, the appeal if that defends the right word because of language that's in here. That will be a catalyst to, if the town doesn't want this kind of appeals to go through and just modify the action code itself for the next time.
Well, and why not be proactive and recommend to the council that they get this to the attorney to clean up? And he gets it to Kelly for her comments on what she's found and fix it before it becomes a bigger problem.
I don't think Greenbaum would be opposed to that. I don't think. Would he?
So.
I don't think he would, but I would, I would speak to like maybe the mayor or the council and say, you know, this is something that, this is what came up. And ask them, you know, explain exactly what Kelly said and ask them to consider getting the changes going.
Hey, Maria, Ginger wants to close this down and get out of here and go home because. But, but, so ask her your question.
Do we select a chair today? Do we make a decision on three, two, and one year?
No.
Okay.
Because we decide on the time you would like to meet and we'll put an agenda so that you can, can do those, those items.
And Tricia is still in the game, right? She just.
I haven't heard from her. So Tony, have you heard from Tricia at all or?
Well, I mean, yes, but I'm not about any of this. So I'll, I'll ask her. I sent her a text. I sent her two texts today, so.
Yeah, I have not heard otherwise from her. So I'm assuming that, yes, she is, and maybe she was just tied up today.
I mean, in case we need to be looking for that fifth person.
Well, we might have to look at two.
Yeah. When will the commissioners meet there?
That was a good lead-in. Honest answer is, I do not know. I think it'll be in November.
I think it's the middle of November.
Well, we're in November now, so.
While the interviews haven't been set, I think the interviews are at least two weeks out, plus or minus. For one from the Madisonian, I wouldn't know any of this.
It was on their agenda today to set the schedule for interviews. Select and set the time for interviews. I just read it.
Well, that's true. How'd you like to do the Madisonian? Looking out for more?
I did, I got on the Madisonian side.
So do we need to adjourn the meeting or it just ends?
I, I think since it was a training, I would say.
I adjourn.
Sorry.
Thanks, Ginger.
Thank you, guys.
Do you have anything to say, Dan?
Um, not yet.
There's always, there's always the lingering conversations that people like to hear.
I see.
Not for a while until you turn it off. I know that.
This one's open?
I'm waiting here for the caller.
Sure. Sir. I wanted to go talk to Laura down at the long branch.
Okay.
Of course.
But I carry spares.
I don't know. You just don't know, but the commission, you know, I know the way I'm running.
Well, it's the two commissioners that make the decision, right? Based on the.
Ultimately, I think that's true. While you go through all this and then.
I believe it is, and they have to be unanimous.
No.
There's two of them. They both have to watch the same person.
Yeah, it won't be a 50-50 split.
Yeah, that'd be kind of hard.
Yeah, you're right. That's ironic. It has to be them.
Just don't make.
Was that?
Unfortunately, Jim Hart spoke out both sides of his.
Awesome.
He tried to block everybody on the desktop.
Probably don't please anybody.
That's right. Am I, I'm watching.
You know, I didn't pay a lot of attention to Jim, but it's somewhere in here.
Sure.
Maybe three years ago, it was just like.
I get that. All right.
I don't know why.
Tracy, you? You too. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We'll see you guys.
Good thing. I think you better go home and have a cigar and drink a little whiskey.
Well, I'm bowling tonight at seven, so.
Oh, you better keep sharp for that.
Like, we start drinking beer.
Men's bowling night is just phenomenal by how many beers, I can't count how many beers go through each guy.
Well, you can't because some of them go through a lot more.
Yeah, but on average, it's, you know, I couldn't do it.
I keep, I keep trying to get up to Helen and get a volleyball made, but. So I can look at it. What's our degree that people put in there?
Oh, I, I'm going to be very close to 45. Off the curve. It doesn't take very long, but 45.
Tomorrow.
Just playing the trees.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, somebody said move it down, put parking here. Move it down this way.
I'll sneak by it and then you can keep talking.
Oh, no, we're still being recorded.
Are you coming, Maria?
Yes.
Where are we, where are we going to go?
I'll text, I have to text you. I don't know yet.
Well.
You're running here.
Oh, great, yes.
Maria, evening, Christian. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, you too. Why don't you just come down?